Thank you so much, Gatin. My name is Brianna Daidal and I will be emceeing this evening. It's my pleasure to introduce first the Adams 14 Board of Education President, Ms. Ramona Lewis.
President Lewis, you're muted.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to our Mount March Town Hall. This evening, we will be meeting the four candidates for the open board member position. I'm Ramona Lewis, President of the Adams 14 Board of Education. I'm here with my fellow colleagues on the board. Let me introduce them and ask each one to wave so our community can get to know us. First, we have our president, our Vice President Renee Lovato. Next is our Treasurer Connie Quintana. And finally, Director Maria Zubia. We are all excited to hear from the candidates this evening. As Brianna said, she is our moderator for this evening. So Brianna, would you please continue our forum?
Yes. Thank you, President Lewis, and esteemed members of the Adams 14 Board of Education. Tonight is part of the process to fill a board vacancy for November through November of 2021. We really appreciate the time that you've taken to join us this evening, both our candidates and members of the community and our staff who are participating in tonight's discussion. The board received four letters of interest for our board vacancy, and tonight you'll hear from each of them. We want to thank them for being here tonight. So I'd like to just take a moment to introduce them briefly. If you can each wave again so everyone knows who you are. We'll start with Mr. James Amador. Thank you. Mr. Chance Cox. Thank you. Ms. Jolene Di Guero. Thank you. And finally, Ms. Janet Estrada. Thank you, candidates. This meeting is being recorded and it'll be available on the district's YouTube channel, and we will also have it posted to our Adams 14 website. As announced at the beginning of the meeting, we do have live Spanish interpretation available using the globe at the bottom of your Zoom screen. And for anyone speaking tonight, please remember to keep a slower pace so that we can make sure that everyone can hear what's being shared tonight. Members of the community, excuse me, tonight, our candidates are going to answer five questions, and these were provided by our Adams 14 Board of Education. Members of the community can also submit questions by sending an email to communications@adams14.org. So if time permits, each candidate will have an opportunity to respond to those questions from the community. If time does not allow for the community questions for candidates, the questions will be made available to the Board of Education as they review and consider their selection. So, and after tonight's town hall, we also want to make a reminder that the community can also submit comments about any of our candidates, and that is once again to communications@adams14.org. And these comments will be shared directly with our Adams 14 Board of Education. So tonight, as I shared, we have five questions that the board has provided to help frame remarks this evening. So I'm going to read them briefly once, and then I will also repeat them for our candidates as we get started for responses. Question one. What are the most pressing challenges and opportunities for Adams 14? As a board member, how would you propose we address those challenges and opportunities? Question two. Education continues to grapple with painful budget decisions in large part due to inadequate state funding. With limited resources, how would you prioritize funding to support student achievement, family and community engagement, and safe school environments? Question three. If a parent or principal comes to you regarding, for example, a maintenance issue at a particular campus or a situation involving a particular teacher, how do you see your role as a school board member in resolving that issue? Number four. Describe how you would work to overcome a difference of opinion around decisions the board makes to find compromises that are in the best interests of Adams 14 students. If you can, please draw upon an example from your personal or professional experience. And finally, number five. What are some qualities of an effective team, and how do you demonstrate being an effective team member? Don't worry, candidates, I will read them again before each section. You guys are going to be great. All right. Each candidate is going to have three minutes to share their thoughts on each of our five questions. Again, that'll be three minutes for each candidate for each question. When there are 30 seconds remaining, you'll hear a short bell that Monica will ring. Did we hear the short bell? Let's try it again, Monica, I was talking, I'm sorry. Short bell.
Did you hear it? Were, did you hear the bell?
It's faint. You might have to really. There we go. That will be your short bell. That's indicating that you have 30 seconds remaining to round out your response. So when your time is up, you'll hear a longer bell. Monica? There we go. Thank you, Monica, and candidates will help you through, learn it together. All right. So before we get started with our Board of Education's questions, each candidate will have four minutes to share a little bit about themselves and why they are interested in the vacancy on our Adams 14 Board of Education. So going in alphabetical order, Mr. Amador, we will have you go first so you can start your four minutes when you're ready.
All right. Good evening, guys. My name is James Amador. A little bit about me, as I was born and raised in Commerce City. I still live on the same block that I grew up on. I do have a daughter in the district, and I have a little two-year-old who's been running around me tonight. I have been a member of the DAC and SAC committees for the last two years. I am also the co-chair of the DAC committee currently, and I am the head of the Parent Engagement Committee currently, working with DAC to help with our parent engagement. And the reason that I really would like to be on the Board of Education is I feel that I can help with making decisions and helping to bring back, you know, a lot of pride that I miss in this district that I believe, you know, we've bossed over the last couple decades from when I actually attended school here and my wife and my family. So that would be the biggest reason why I really think that to help with the students, the community, and being involved with it is really, you know, what I've really been reaching out for for the last couple of years, and it's been very worth my time in being part of all the committees and the PTO and the DAC and SAC of the schools that my daughter's been at for the last two years.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Amador. Appreciate it. Next, we're going to hear from Mr. Cox. If you're ready, you can start with your four minutes.
Thank you. I appreciate the time that everybody's taken tonight to come out and watch us and the boards, you know, hearing us out. I've been a lifelong member of this community. My family's been here for the better part of 70 years. I'm an Adam City graduate, and I have two older sons who are actually attending Adam City, very involved in sports. My grandparents moved here in the 50s and have helped in this community set up churches and different things. My grandfather ever drove RTD, the 48, and a lot of people just knew who he was just because of that. So it's always been important to me, you know, we've been here for a long time. And for me, it was, you know, one thing that led to me opening my own nonprofit, the Nonprofit Garage. And it's led to a lot of community stuff that I've been doing. It's brought me into this realm in hopes that I can bring something to the table for the community that would benefit them in this time. And, you know, in the last 30 years, I know we've struggled in a few areas and whatnot since I was a kid. And, you know, it'd be cool to see what we can do and if there's something that I can bring to maybe push those things along. You know, when I went to high school here, you know, vocational facilities were huge for me personally. You know, our graduation rate has suffered off and on over the years. And in between sports and vocational, I really think that those two things are important because it gives you motivation, it gives you drive, and it gives you a purpose. And I would like to see also some of those things pushed and how they can be pushed and what they look like now. You know, I was FIC president back then and maybe something that can be brought back to the high school, you know, and just ideas like that that I've thought about. And rather than talk about it at home or on the internet or anything like that, I thought I'd bring it here today and see how it goes and what I can, you know, add to everybody.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Cox. Next, we'll hear from Ms. Di Guero.
Ms. Di Guero, you're muted.
Thank you. Sorry about that. That's like the famous words right now, everybody, you're muted, you're muted. So I started in the district as a kindergartner. I went to DuPont and then proceeded to Adam City Middle School. And then eventually, I graduated from the high school in 1996. Back in 1996, orange and green, orange and green, everybody loved the Eagles. We were so prideful of our school, our community, and since then, it's lacking. So that is a huge reason that I want to be on the Board of Education is to bring that back. Adam City is very well-known, and it's, we're well-known because our school is awesome. And we need to make the students now realize that we are awesome, and we want to continue to be awesome. However, it's going to take some communication and some loyalty. We need to bring back pride. Like James said, I totally agree with that. As far as my involvement with the community, I've been a DAC member. I've been on multiple PTAs with my children who have also grown up in the district from kindergarten through high school, and I still have students in the high school now. I have served on the Adam City Wrestling Youth Program. As a board member, I was a secretary there for multiple six years, and my kids grew up through the program. And gosh, I'm nervous. Bringing back. I just want to bring back the community involvement, relationships with the students, with the staff. I guess that's about it.
Thank you, Ms. Di Guero. I think we can all take just a 10-second, like, deep breath because I think you're not the only one who feels nervous. We all feel nervous. This is an uncomfortable platform, but the beautiful thing about Commerce City and Adams 14 is it has just really rich community and roots in supporting each other. So we are all here together. So let's just all take one quick, just relaxing breath, knowing that we're all serving the same purpose of our families and students. So, all right. And finally, Mrs. Estrada, you now have four minutes.
Thank you. So my name is Janet Estrada. My parents immigrated from Zacatecas, Mexico in 1970 to give my siblings and I a better life. I was born and raised in southwest Denver in the Westwood neighborhood where gangs and police sirens were prevalent. Growing up, I was labeled an English language learner, an at-risk student because I lived in poverty and I moved around a lot. I can relate to what a lot of our families and students are going through in Commerce City, being that more than 90% of our students are students of color, more than 85% are free and reduced lunch, and more than half of our students are emerging bilingual students. So I fit those exact same labels, and I can tell you how they had an effect on my peers and what types of barriers and obstacles they placed in front of me as well. I remember when I was little, eating government cheese, using, you know, those brown dollars, the food stamps to buy groceries. Our school would give us donations just to make ends meet. Later, when I was around nine years old, my mom passed away, and I can't tell you how I did it or how it went, but I persevered. And so I share this story not to get pity. I share it to show you how resilient and powerful our students can be. So having experienced different degrees of trauma throughout my childhood and early adulthood, I can tell you that that has served as my motor to be where I am today and to do the work that I do today. Apart from those struggles, I also learned later on that there were barriers that were working against me as well because I'm a Mexicana and I'm a woman of color. I learned about how American education systems were not designed for the BIPAC community, Black Indigenous and people of color. I learned that throughout history, policies and laws and systems were being created to strip away our languages, our cultures, our traditions and all. So I quickly began to realize that education was the only thing that could liberate myself and people like me. So I decided to go into education, and I wanted to be that teacher that helped students, just like the teachers helped me when I was little. And once I was in the teacher role, I noticed that I would have much more of a positive impact on students if I was a school leader because as a school leader, I wouldn't only impact the 25 or 30 students I had in my classroom. However, I would impact hundreds more. And so as I continue in my journey for public education, my passion continues to grow, to break down barriers that our students and our communities have. And I realized that my calling is much bigger than what I had anticipated. So I'm prepared and passionate about creating environments where our students and our teachers can thrive. I also have the skillset needed to begin to dismantle oppressive systems and have created, that have created those historical patterns of inequity for our students. So here I am, I stand before you today as a committed Commerce City community member with the intent to work collaboratively with all stakeholders to ensure that our students and teachers and families are happy that they have the supports and resources they need to be successful in life and that our school district moves forward in a positive direction where academic achievement and growth will continue to improve and post-secondary workforce readiness will continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Estrada. Appreciate that. Thank you, candidates. That was wonderful. So next, we're going to begin our question and answer portion of the evening, and this will be the five questions submitted by our or provided by our Adams 14 Board of Education. Just a quick reminder, before we start though, again, the community is welcome to submit questions to communications@adams14.org. Gatin Colato on my team is on standby checking those emails in real time to gather those as they come in. And if time permits, at the end of our town hall, after we've heard from our candidates, we'll open it up for those questions to be answered. If time does not allow, and the conversation is just so rich that these questions will be made available to our Board of Education, and they will have that in their consideration process. Again, community comments about candidates can also be shared to communications@adams14.org. So without further ado, we will move on to our five questions provided by our Board of Education. We are going to alternate the order in which candidates will answer the questions so that everybody will have a chance to go first. So for question one, we're going to start with Mrs. Estrada, and I'm going to read question one once more before our four candidates begin answering. So again, what are the most pressing challenges and opportunities for Adams 14? As a board member, how would you propose we address these challenges and opportunities? Mrs. Estrada, you have three minutes to respond.
Thank you. Well, since 2016, our student achievement has been well below 37.4%, which the state decides that that does not meet expectations. I would say that another challenge would be post-secondary workforce readiness, also being well below 37.4% over the past four or five years. Within that, we see graduation rates being at around 70%, which can definitely be something we can work towards in getting higher. If we dissegregate that data and look in at the total number of students who are graduating, we see that students with disabilities, emerging bilingual students, and males are lagging even further behind. So that is definitely a challenge that I think we can face and work together to increase graduation rates. Some of the root causes for these challenges are many. Some are within our control and some not so much. As a board member, though, I would collaborate with teachers, school leaders, students and parents to identify root causes and co-create major improvement strategies. For student achievement, I would definitely work with the district instructional leaders to improve best practices for our diverse learners. I would analyze and bring to the table the most recent and relevant cultural response of teaching mindsets and curricula. I believe that when we hear all voices at the table, we accomplish more. Therefore, I would create a Board of Education Community Cabinet where I would work with a group chosen to represent and reflect the diversity of the district. It would be made up of community members, organizations, parents, students, meeting monthly or more often to discuss major improvement strategies and how to push academic achievement, graduation rates, and post-secondary workforce readiness forward. Some current challenges that we're facing now are managing remote learning during a pandemic, right? And so these challenges could be addressed by working with state health officials, working with schools. And like I mentioned before, just having that very collaborative spirit where we're working together to ensure that everybody's voice is at the table when trying to make any type of improvement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Estrada. Next, we'll move on to Mr. Amador. Mr. Amador, when you start, you'll have three minutes.
All right. Thank you, Brianna. So some of the challenges that we're seeing in the district from being on the DAC community, with the DAC that looks at this and collaborates with our Board of Education in all aspects is we have a huge problem with a lot of our retention of our teachers, our dropout rate. Are
Mr. Amador, you are muted, or we lost sound?
That is why, like I said, getting out there and getting on DAC is one of the key reasons I did it because it helps me address that. It helps me look at our attendance, our turnover.
Mr. Amador? Mr. Amador?
I don't know if you can hear us.
Provide as a family group.
Mr. Amador?
Yes.
I'm so sorry, sir. We, your, your mic is cutting in and out, so we're getting like 10 to 15 second blips where we can't hear you.
Oh, okay. Let me see if I can move somewhere else. Sorry, guys. I have a bunch of, all right. Let me see, I can move real quick.
I don't think it's your internet, it's your microphone.
It's my mic? Okay. Um, I get, let me remove it. I could use just my computer.
Is that better? Can you guys hear me now?
That's much better. No worries. Breath, it's technology in a pandemic.
No problem. I use those headsets all the time.
So I just start your answer over because we got very little information from your we, we'll go ahead and start the clock over.
Okay. No problem. So some of the challenges that I've seen from being on part of the DAC, which is the committee that is very diverse with parents, staff, district employees, and everything that we do is, you know, we have a big retention of teachers. We have, you know, a struggle with our graduation rate. We have a struggle with, you know, our UIP, our reading, our, you know, second language learners. And it seems like, you know, we've, with that committee that I've been on for the past two years, I think that the work that we've been doing is amazing to continually work with the Board of Education and work with the district to provide information that we see fit with the community and the parents' voice in telling us, you know, that, you know, a big thing that they want to see is, you know, the communication with our schools, working with other people in the school, getting our pride back with some of the alumni and getting stuff going with alumni to come back and show, you know, how we can press some of these challenges in giving opportunities to our students to learn from people who've been there and done that in our community and have graduated there and have succeeded. So, you know, some of those challenges that we've pushed, you know, especially with DAC have been, you know, really focusing on some UIP, really focusing on getting parents back involved in the district and being able to have their voice heard even more than what we're hearing now and trying to get them to engage in coming back to the schools. And I want to continue that. And I think our Board of Education is on the right track of where they're at, what they've been doing and working with them for the last two years has been amazing. So getting to work with them and continually work with them and know that they take what we give them as advice in that committee and put it towards the district and working with the superintendent wrangle over the last two years has been amazing. So for me, I think, you know, our challenges are stuff that we keep addressing and we keep moving forward in this community. And, you know, we've, we're looking at all curriculums to be able to help our students. We're looking at ways to help better improve communication with our students and our families. So that for me, you know, our pressing challenges is a retention for teachers, but I think we really need to figure out how we can reach out and get the community back involved in this district. And that, that would be it, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amador. Next, we'll hear from Mr. Cox. Mr. Cox, when you begin, you'll have three minutes to respond.
Okay. Can you hear me on that one? I just want to make sure before we get rolling. Good. All right, guys. You know, I really like this question and like everybody's answers so far. But for me, like I said, I graduated from this system. But as a kid who went K through 12 in this system, I couldn't read and I was never on track to be at grade level. I was never on track to be on grade level for math. And in 30 years, that hasn't changed. And there has to be a reason for it. And the one thing that, when reading this question, the one thing that I liked the most about it is, is it allows me to look at this and it allows me to ask why. And I think no matter what we do, our literacy should be the biggest thing because it's great to look at people as success stories. It's great to look at people as people that come up from downtrotting things, and that's awesome. But I want more for my own kids and other people's kids, especially in communities like this that, you know, once you're behind, I mean, if you don't have the right motivations, this could really leave some people behind. So when you talk about these graduation rates, you really have to look at you really have to look at the start. And for me, uh, one thing that I learned in the nonprofit world, I worked real closely with single moms and single dads and uh, you know, Warren Village was a battered woman's shelter. And one thing they had was early childhood development. And one thing they did was is at very early ages, they would take children and they would make sure that they could read and understand the books. And it, and even at three and four, some of these kids were reading better than I did at seven, you know what I mean? So I see those things and I, I want that for our kids too, you know what I mean? I, I want to see what an early childhood development plan might do for Commerce City kids. I want to see what maybe different reading programs that we haven't tried yet, or, or, you know, what have we tried, what haven't we tried? And see what we can implicate for these people, you know what I mean? And see, you know, how can we get them over the hump that, that people like myself weren't able to, you know, until I was much older. Um, you know, good teachers are great. You know, I had some great ones all through school and uh, you know, they eventually did help me. But you know, the, the challenge for the new world is, is whether you're working on a car or you're working on a house, you have to be able to read, you have to be able to write, and you have to be able to communicate with people. And, you know, community is huge with that, right? You teach kids how to interact with their community and their, and their people. And you teach them how to read and, and write. And then you'll see those graduation rates rise. And you'll see them be more successful later on. And I, I would like to implement some of that stuff if I was able to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Finally, we're going to hear from Ms. Di Guero. Ms. Di Guero, when you begin speaking, you'll have three minutes.
Um, I think a big thing um is our relationships, not only as um, me being a parent, a student, a community member, um, relationships with our with our school board and our staff. Um, I think they're suffering. I think we need to repair them and, and improve them. I think the communication has gotten better through the district. However, um, it's not great yet. Um, students need to know that our teachers care and that our teachers are willing to stay with the districts to build that relationship status. We need longevity for sure. We need to know that, um, the, or the students need to know that they're more than just a test score. They need to know that um, that they're part of the community as well. And we need to acknowledge their ideas and their creativity and um ask them, ask them questions. What, we need their voices to be heard as well. So I think part of that's um, one way to help fix that is when we are hiring teachers, we need to be more rigorous in the hiring process, um, looking for individuals to know our community and want to be involved in our community, not just a teacher in our school district. Um, they need to understand that our, our backgrounds are different here in Commerce City and the teachers need to know what they're getting into before they're hired. They, we need to explain to them that this is not only um, a school that you're teaching at, but we need to, uh, our school is, we're eagles and they need to feel that they're an eagle as well. Um, another thing that we need to do is hold our staff and our ourselves, or the school board accountable. Everybody needs to be accountable that um, everybody from the principals down to the staff, down to the janitors, down to the students. The community needs to help make the teachers accountable, I guess. Um, I just feel like everybody's passing the buck. It's not my fault. It's not my fault. It's their fault and blaming instead of being accountable for themselves.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Di Guero. We appreciate everyone's response to number one. Then moving on to question two, or we will start with Mr. Amador. Let me read question two again for our candidates before we begin answering. So. Question two, education continues to grapple with painful budget decisions in large part due to inadequate state funding. With limited resources, how would you prioritize funding to support student achievement, family and community engagement, and safe school environments? Mr. Amador, when you begin, you'll have three minutes to respond.
Thank you, guys. So looking at that, um, how I feel is the students are always first. So we have to focus on the best action to take for the students, whether they're in kindergarten or they're in high school. We have to make sure that we prioritize our students over anything because that is the reason as a community, I feel that we are failing, that our students sometimes are not always the priority. Um, and I think that's the biggest thing. So for me, is to prioritize what we do for our students, giving them the technology they need, the resources they need to make sure that they can succeed. Um, not only in school, but outside of school. Once you graduate here, be prepared. Have them prepared for whatever they do after school, whether it's going to college, whether it's going to a tech school. My priority will always be first is my students. Uh, what I can do to help that in giving my students. The second one with parents is how we can communicate to them to get the communication up, to get our parents involved, to make them understand that their student is, you know, their student is just as important as the next student, you know, and I think that's the biggest thing that I feel is we really have to get the community involved in helping our district continually to succeed because we have failed at certain aspects of community engagement and pushing away people who have wanted to come to the community and help. Um, pushing away alumni that have wanted to come and help the district, have wanted to come and help the school. Um, you know, certain organizations. And, and for me, the way you succeed is by you putting your kids first and by having that community engagement because we have, you know, I've been in the district my whole life. I grew up here. Um, my wife's growing up here. My kids are growing up here. My family grew up here. My parents graduated from the high school. And the biggest thing that I see that we miss um from growing up here is just is the communication that we have and the pride that we have in our community. And that for me is what I want to address. Our students come first. But if we can get help from alumni to come in because our alum is diverse, our alum is very diverse and we have people who've succeeded in all aspects of life. Um, you know, we've, you know, it just seems like for a while, we didn't want them to help. You know, and I think if we make a good push to get some involvement with our community, with our alumni, who in the past we might have pushed away to come in, I think that is where will help grow and help put our kids first. So they understand that just because you grew up in this area, you know, some people feel like, you know, oh, well, they don't want to be prideful of it. Look, you can succeed. You can do anything you want. You just have to understand that we're going to put you first and we want to give you every resource for our kids to be able to push them to succeed and give them every opportunity to succeed. Um, you know, for a challenge of safety of schools, um, I, I really think with the pandemic.
I'm sorry, Mr. Amador. That was the official end bell. Are you still with us?
I'm not sure I heard that bell either, so just so you know.
Oh, you didn't? Okay, Monica, we may need to boost the bell a little bit. It looks like Mr. Amador is frozen.
Sorry, am I, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
My computer's been giving me issues the last couple of days. Sorry, guys. So sorry.
Mr. Amador, that was actually the bell for the end of the response, but thank you so much for your response. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Wonderful. So, um, Mr. Cox, uh, you'll be next to respond. And once you start, you will have three minutes and we'll try to be a little bit louder with our bell.
Would you mind reading me the question, you know, could?
Absolutely. Education continues to grapple with painful budget decisions in large part due to inadequate state funding. With limited resources, limited resources, how would you prioritize funding to support student chee- student achievement, family and community engagement, and safe school environments?
Thank you for that. Um, you know, for me, I think, uh, you know, one of the biggest things for kids with achievements is, uh, you know, it takes nothing for us to post them on a, you know, say on a roll or uh, you know, your top athletes or something, you know, right here on, on an Adams County website, you know, per, you know, the high school has their guys, the middle school has their guys, uh, stuff like that. And and you make a big deal out of it that way for me, um, especially for the ones that are doing so well. Uh, and then, you know, I'm gonna tie this into the community thing a little bit with the parents. And uh, you know, for me, I, I think these theory things run almost uh, side by side. Because if you, if you run community events, say you have a potluck or you have uh, meet and greets and stuff, where students get to meet the teachers outside of school, they get to meet the s- school board outside of like this arena. They get to meet uh, each other, counselors and, and, you know, you'd even be bringing people in from the community, you know, peace officers that are in the schools. And you, and you let everybody see that we're just, we're people, you know, and we're, we're able to talk and we're able to communicate in a way that uh, opens doors. Children respond to that, adults respond to that. Um, and it makes people feel safer. It makes people uh, more open to be who they are. And it allows them to uh, see that, you know, we're not all perfect and we're not, you know, you know, the the teacher that the kid thinks doesn't like him, maybe outside of school, they meet and they find out the teacher really likes them. They just, you know, they're hard on them because they think highly of them. Or, you know, you, you get that communication outside of, of a environment that is um sometimes uh, you know, we're always in a hurry, right? You're always getting class to class, you're trying to get your test done, whatever the case is. No stress that way, you know, we're, we're all having, you know, kind of a sit down and, and in a, in a community meeting, you know, and a in a way to bond with each other to where, hey, that's just so and so. He's not, you know, he's not the school officer that uh, you know, seems to have to be the bad guy, or he's not the teacher that gave me an F. He's actually nice. And, you know, the kids respond to that. And then, like I said, if they get to get to be recognized on the school website or even on, on the Adams County District website, it gives them, you know, a little bit of recognition and, and a little bit of a rub and stuff. And you know, even for kids that struggle or kids that, you know, maybe, you know, maybe need most improvement or things like that. And you can help them too in that way. And you can, you know, kinda, kinda give them the most improved kind of thing too. Is that my bell?
Yes, that was
I'll leave it at that, guys.
We are working on the amplification of our bell. Um, so we're, we're troubleshooting that on the backend. Thank you, Mr. Cox. Ms. Di Guero, you'll be next. And when you unmute and begin speaking, you'll have three minutes for your response.
Um, I'm sorry, will you repeat the question?
Absolutely. Education continues to grapple with painful budget decisions in large part due to inadequate state funding. With limited resources, how would you prioritize funding to support student achievement, family and community engagement, and safe school environments?
Um, so with the budgets getting smaller and our educators are supposed to um, aren't, they're expected to um I guess do more with less. Uh, we need to be creative in our funding. Um, working with community organizations, specialized grants, um, community partnerships. Uh, the understanding that the district needs to have um have a partnership with the different organizations like, such as the rec center. Students maybe be more involved with the, to get the students more involved with the community and the community more involved with the school. Um, partnering with the rec center. I know we, we kind of do that now, but I don't feel it's um, something that is very much um you, it's not utilized as it should be. Um, and then if, when we start to uh, use our organizations, the students will realize the impact that those organizations have on our community and then the community has with our school district. It's a big cycle and we all feed off of each other. Uh, we need to be just involved. And then, so when everybody starts to get involved, um we just, it work, it starts to work together. Um, I have all these ideas in my head and they're not coming out like they should be. Um, I don't, I, I guess mostly just um building those relationships with the community and the partnerships, um, get creative with our, with our funding, the grants, the um uh, I don't know.
Thank you, Ms. Di Guero. So we're gonna um, pause for ten seconds. We've been working on our, our bell issue in the background. Um, so what we're gonna do instead for our candidates to make sure everyone can hear it, despite testing this ahead of time, it doesn't seem to be as loud in practice. So Monica will chime in when you're at thirty seconds. You'll hear her voice say thirty seconds. Sorry, that's a little more uh disruptive than our bell. But then at the end, she'll um, chime in and say time. So listen for Monica's voice. Um, you all are doing wonderful. Again, this is a hard platform. Everything digital is hard when we're used to being together. Thank you, Mr. Guero. Mrs. Strada, you'll be our finalists, our final on this piece. So once you begin speaking, you have three minutes.
Um, so as an educator and as a school leader, I've seen what budget cuts do firsthand. I've had to sit with a principal and really decide, um, you know, what teachers or what interventionists or what roles we needed to cut. And so I see the importance of prioritization. And so for me, I would go into buildings and I would, I would see what's happening and lend my support. I would have empathy interviews with students, teachers and leaders to find out um, what's lacking, to find out what is being prioritized. Um, I would look at data and financial resources. I would reach out to financial partners in our district to create a plan where funds are being prioritized to improve student outcomes. I would just ensure that there are protocols and processes that happen where Um, I would just ensure that there are protocols and processes that happen where, um, you know, the major improvement strategies are prioritized, um, in tandem with looking at everything that's in our, um, financial plan and, um, in our budget. And so I think that, um, having firsthand experience on, on what this feels like at a school level, um, I can, I can only imagine and see how, um, again, the more we collaborate with, um, with our whole district, the better, um, the better off we are. And so I would definitely reach out to, again, like I said, financial partners, um, and create a plan and, and see where we can move funds, shift funds to ensure again that, um, we're improving student outcomes and that we are, um, prioritizing instructional best practices and resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Strada. We appreciate everyone's response to question number two. So now we'll move on to question number three, and this time we'll start with Mr. Cox. Again, I'll read the question for our candidates before we begin answering. If a parent or principal comes to you regarding, for example, a maintenance issue at a particular campus or a situation involving a particular teacher, how do you see your role as a school board member in resolving that issue? Mr. Cox, you'll have three minutes to respond once you begin speaking.
Thank you. Um, you know, this is a, you know, in a, in another life, I was actually a service writer and I, I dealt with cars. And, uh, there's nothing worse than having to tell somebody that their car is, uh, no longer going to be running. So, um, you know, I learned a very valuable thing there and it was the ability to, uh, just, you know, be empathetic of how somebody's feeling because, you know, you gotta, you gotta understand what they're trying to tell you. And that, that what they are telling you at that moment, uh, is probably to them at that time, the most important thing because they, they seeked you out. Most people, you know, are shy by nature. I mean, they don't, uh, seek out public figures or even just people in general that they don't know. Uh, so, you know, you gotta kind of treat it like, uh, like it was your problem, you know, like it was something that you were trying to relay to somebody and you really gotta just, just hear it out and let them vent. And, uh, you know, once you got all the information and whatnot, you know, for me personally, I would check with the board and, and, you know, check with our rules and see if it is something that the board can, uh, vote on or, or bring to, bring to attention or, um, you know, or at very least, you know, you, you, you know, there's always a, a pecking order of things, right? So there's a boss everywhere and, uh, always somebody to, to, to give that feedback to, right? Whether it's positive or negative, uh, feedback. And, uh, I think everybody needs positive and negative feedback because it's the only way you improve. And for me, you know, if it's a maintenance thing and it's something the board can vote on and maybe, uh, get fixed, you know, I, you know, no problem bringing it to the board and, and seeing if they can vote on it. And, uh, you know, having, having somebody's concerns addressed, uh, should be something that, um, is part of, part of our duties. Uh, but at the same time, you know, you, uh, you gotta really look at it as something that, uh, you know, what are the stages and the steps for it? But, you know, you always hear them out and you always want to make sure people feel heard and, you know, care about what they're saying because it's important, you know? Everybody should be heard and, you know, even if you don't agree on something, you know, you, you, you should hear them out and at least, uh, make your best efforts to, uh, either point them in the right direction or, um, point their concerns in the right direction so that, uh, so that, you know, it can be least acknowledged.
30 seconds remaining.
30 seconds. Um, and for me, that's the biggest thing is just, uh, to make sure that people are heard. And that's, uh, one of the main reasons I'm here.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Next, we'll hear from Ms. Aguero. Ms. Aguero, when you unmute and begin speaking, you'll have three minutes.
Um, actually, uh, somebody coming to me on a personal level, um, that's where I would excel because this whole big platform and, uh, everybody just looking at me is so uncomfortable to me. Um, but if somebody, if I was at a school and a person approached me for an issue with whatever that would be, um, that would be something that I can handle with ease. That's where I would excel. Um, I would let them know, I, I would listen actually first to what the issue would be, take into consideration their feelings, um, what's going on in the school district at that time. Um, it could be something that I could just handle right there. If it, if it was a maintenance issue, um, maybe I could find the janitor for them. Or, um, if it was an issue with the teacher, maybe that would be something that we could just approach the teacher at the school that, um, being next to somebody that you feel comfortable with, uh, makes it a little bit easier to talk to somebody. So if it was an issue with the teacher and it was something simple that we could just resolve at the school, we would, I would definitely help that person do that. Uh, if it was something much larger that we needed to discuss as a board, then of course I would bring it to the board, open it, um, make it open for discussion. Uh, we would definitely, um, have our communication with that individual and then go from there. Um, we would get back to her on whatever that, or him, whatever that issue may be, and make sure that it gets resolved, especially in a timely manner. Um, we would need to, uh, not take our time with something that somebody thought was important, even if it is probably not important to anybody else. It's important to somebody and that's why it was brought to our attention. So, um, handling the situation with somebody on a personal level would be way easier than talking to all of you. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Aguero. We appreciate that. Next, we're going to hear from Mr. Amador. Mr. Amador, once you begin speaking, you'll have three minutes.
So for me, um, handling someone like that would definitely be, um, first off, you listen to them because they're bringing it to your attention. So it is important to them. Um, but definitely having some kind of protocol for us to be able to follow up, to get to the right people to get this taken care of. Because sometimes you can handle it on the spot and sometimes it has to be something that you get to the correct person to handle that situation. If that is a situation that needs to be handled, um, in an appropriate manner. So always having a protocol of how we would handle certain situations is definitely, you know, how I would follow it, being that, you know, I've worked in a school, I've coached in a school. My wife is a teacher in a school. Definitely working and listening to the, the situation. Um, and always being open to listen to whoever comes and approaches you because it is, it's a concern to them at that time. And sitting there and listening to it, um, before you ever take actions, you have to listen. Um, then address what the action needs to be done, taken. So if it's something that can be done right there, I totally agree with you and you take it and you fix the situation. Um, or handle the situation the best that you can. But if it can't be, it's definitely something where you find the proper channels for them as well as for you. And you stay in touch with that person. The biggest thing that I learned, um, from my years of sales and interaction with people as well is your communication. If you stay in touch with that person after they bring that situation to you and you get it to the appropriate people, you follow up with them, you check in with them. You make them feel like they're a part and it's special. Um, and always talk to them and reach out to them, make sure that, you know, things did get handled. And if it didn't, you know, make sure that you can approach another person to make sure that that can be handled. Um, if it is something that needs to be addressed with the board, you bring it to the board and all of us and we talk about it as a board and make the best decision that would address the best for the person that is bringing that to their attention. But it's definitely, you're going to get people who are going to see you in the store. You're going to get people who are going to see you in the community if you live in the community. Um, you know, I am everywhere in the community, um, with my kids. So if they see me and someone stops me, I'm going to listen because that's what we as board members are here for. We're here for.
30 seconds remaining.
Thank you. Um, so yes, so my would definitely be to listen and then follow, you know, the protocols and definitely follow up and make sure that those people feel special and that the, the situation was handled. But if it wasn't, definitely address it until it is handled for that person.
Thank you, Mr. Amador. Next, we'll hear from Mrs. Strada on the same question, number three. Mrs. Strada, once you unmute, you'll have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. As a servant leader, um, and previous experiences, I can tell you that I've been in that situation as a parent and as a teacher, I have reached out to school board members, superintendents. And let me tell you the first thing that I would do, um, just something my, my parents taught me, I would acknowledge and listen to the person who's speaking. After, I would let them know that the situation would be addressed as soon as possible. After, I would let them, um, let the parties that are involved know, um, what the situation is. I would offer my support and if the process in place, um, is ineffective, then I would improve the process. Um, lastly, I would get back to the parents and give them an update. Um, but I think, um, the most important thing here, just like the rest of, um, the fellow candidates have said, is making sure that the parents are heard and validated. Um, and then always following through with, um, trying to fix the issue. Um, and then keeping that connection wide open with the parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Strada. Now we'll move on to question four. So on this one, we're going to start with Ms. Aguero. I'm going to read question four again for our candidates before we get started with answering. Describe how you would work to overcome a difference of opinion around decisions the board makes to find compromises that are in the best interests of Adams 14 students. If you can, please draw upon an example from your personal or professional experience. Ms. Aguero, when you start speaking, you'll have three minutes to respond.
I can honestly foresee that, um, there will definitely be differences in opinion on the board because oftentimes my opinion differs from what is happening on the board. So I know for a fact that there will be differences of opinion. Um, how I would handle that is when the situation arises, I will listen to their opinion. I will respect their opinion as I would appreciate the respects of them listening to my opinion, um, the same as, the same respect I give to them. Um, I'm definitely one who compromises. Um, once I, once I hear you out and I hear your reasoning as to why you have the opinion you have, um, I could definitely compromise. Um, I'm not hard headed to where I, I think my opinion is the best opinion. So, um, as far as, as that's concerned, I would definitely, um, I listen and, um, respect is a huge thing for me. Um, as far as my personal experience of, I guess a negotiation that happens, um, I can use my experience from the wrestling youth club. Um, the president and I, oftentimes we had our differences in opinions. And, um, there was time where he wanted to, uh, join these different leagues and I thought that we should not keep going to these different leagues and our wrestlers needed to get out and experience the national scene more. And, um, he didn't think that was a great idea because we were so young. Well, we compromised, we made a traveling team and we still joined those other leagues. So we had the best of both worlds. That's compromise. That's my thing.
Thank you, Ms. Aguero. Next, we're going to hear from Mrs. Strada. Mrs. Strada, once you unmute yourself and begin speaking, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Uh, so I've always been a very diplomatic person, um, and I always keep students first. I'm open minded and I'm able to see different points of views, even if they don't align with mine. Um, I don't take things personally nor assume that my ideas are always right. I'm always able to compromise, especially in the sake of improving the lives of the kids that I serve. Um, one example is when creating a pathway to the syllabi literacy program at one of my schools, I was able to see another team member's point of view where, um, the equity lens was a little shifted and, um, there was a discussion around, um, celebrating bilingual students, but then what about the rest? And so, um, we opened it up as a committee that I was leading and we decided that we would celebrate all students in different ways. And so, um, I think that really speaks to, um, elevating everybody's voice, getting everybody's voice at the table and then compromising and doing what's best for all students. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Strada. Next, we will hear from Mr. Amador. Same question. When you begin speaking, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Brandon. So for me, um, I always think the best is to listen to everyone's opinion first. Um, you know, everyone has their opinion. Everyone believes in what they believe in. So sitting there and listening to everyone's opinion, um, and focusing on what is best for the district and the students to help improve that is how I would handle it. So definitely listening to everything, compromising, listening to everyone's opinion and then making the best decision as a team to be able to focus on what will be best for our community. Um, how I used to do that is I ran a school, um, an elementary school as the facility manager. So I did all the cleaning and working closely with the teachers, the principals. Um, they didn't always align with the same situations, but we always made compromises to do what was best for our kids in helping, uh, keep that school maintained and keep it, you know, where it needed to keep going. So working with, you know, all sorts of people regardless of where you're at, you definitely have to do that and you have to focus on being a team to make the best decisions for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amador. Finally, Mr. Cox, you'll have three minutes to answer the question once you unmute your microphone and start speaking.
Appreciate that. You know, uh, for this one, it's really one of those things where, uh, a difference of opinion can actually, um, help things grow. Um, for me, you know, what are, what is the difference of opinion now? Is both parties or all parties keeping the goal in sight? Because that's, um, I think sometimes that's what gets lost is, uh, you know, we, uh, we, we see things and maybe, uh, maybe we don't remember what our goal was, right? So it's important to remember at the end of the day, as long as you can pull pieces from everybody's argument and everybody's choices and options, and you can piece together something that makes the most sense for the goal that you have in mind. That is, uh, the best part of a compromise. And for me personally, in, in life experience, I've had this a lot in my nonprofit. I've seen this a lot in nonprofit world. Uh, there, there's times where you don't have a lot of money and the money that's allocated for people, uh, you know, you, you gotta make a hard choice, you know, or am I going to help 10 people this month or am I going to help five? Uh, you know, for my board personally, we got a grant one time. It wasn't a lot, but it was, it was, it was money to help people. And, you know, were we going to help five or were we going to help ten or were we going to help twenty? You know, and there's a lot of valid arguments and there's a lot of uh, you know, we could do this and we could do this and we can, you know, we could focus on certain areas. You know, and at the end of the day, what it came down to is, is, you know, these ten people were the ones we were going to help the most, you know, or ten people was going to benefit the most from what we had. And I mean, and those are the hard choices sometimes, right? Because and that's the thing that that maybe the outside world doesn't realize about school boards or or boards in general is you might have the best intentions, but some things may not make it. But did the goal get achieved? And in our case, it did. We were very successful at it and uh, you know, I hope to bring some of that with me, so.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Thank you, Monica. Just to confirm, Mr. Cox, you're completed with that response?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, candidates. So moving on to our final question from the Board of Education, uh, we'll have question five, and we're going to start with Miss Estrada. But let me please read the question again before our candidates begin answering. What are some qualities of an effective team? And how do you demonstrate being an effective team member? Mrs. Strada, once you unmute, you will have three minutes.
So based on Don Miguel Ruiz's book, The Four Agreements, I believe that a productive and happy team has to embody the following four agreements. So be impeccable with your word, don't take things personally, don't make assumptions, and do your best. I also believe that an effective team member trusts, contributes, and is aligned with the district and the community's vision. An effective team can listen, agree to disagree, while always putting students first and at the forefront. Um, I can tell you that I've been a team member, a team leader, and I'm very much capable of working with the team to design what our community and our students need to thrive. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Strada. And now, Mr. Guero, you will also have three minutes to respond to our final question.
I think um, starting with a great team, you need leadership for clarity and consistency and focus. Um, you also need clear goals. The, to work towards, for everybody to work towards that common goal. The team needs to all agree on the common goal. Those goals should be clear. Um, planning. Definitely, everybody making the decisions to support the goal. Honesty, communication, ability to set aside your ego. And um finally, what I think makes a great team is committed consistency and productive actions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Guero. All right, Mr. Cox, you'll be next, and when you unmute, you'll have three minutes.
Um, you know, for me, uh, the one thing that makes a really good team is uh having the same goal in mind for the whole team, no matter, no matter what it is. You know, you, you can't change the goals, you can't uh, you know, well, you can change the goals. Let me correct myself on that. But the goal has to stay steady until the goal is accomplished. Because if the goal is not accomplished, then changing the goal doesn't uh change the fact that you've missed out on that opportunity. And for me, uh, good teams come with good communication, desire and passion for your goals to be accomplished. And, you know, for the people that would benefit from those goals to um you know, see those in action and see those become a reality. You know, you seek after it together, you know, and and whether you're, you know, you're on the same page or not, uh, in or out of, you know, the meetings, when you're in, you know, when you're in the voting and you're and you're trying to get the goals accomplished, the team itself has to be focused on that and and how to get to those. Okay, and for me, a lot of that is demonstrated through uh the effectiveness of implementing the plan of the goal. Um, being on the same page, being honest with each other, having a lot of respect. For your team members and just a mutual understanding of the keys that you set out to accomplish the goal. Uh, I, I think some people uh get discouraged if a goal doesn't get accomplished right away or if it, you know, if it isn't successful. Uh, for me, sometimes that only means that you have to to reposition some of the keys. And uh, you know, it's something that is important to remember. You can't leave behind goals because when you leave behind goals, that means you have already failed at the goal. And for a good team to be a good team or be effective, you have to accomplish your goals, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. And finally, we'll hear from Mr. Amador. Once you unmute, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, so.
Mr. Amador? I think I'm having trouble hearing you. I anticipate everyone else might be. Okay, I'm getting some nods.
Can you hear me, Brianna?
Yeah, I can.
Sorry.
Let's start that over. Okay.
For me, the goal is always, it's a, it's a team goal. You have to have the same goal, you have to have the same achievement and make sure you can achieve it. Um, you have to listen to every voice on the team and make sure you're all on the same page. Because if you don't listen to everyone on the team, something gets left behind. And we don't want to leave our goals behind, we don't want to leave our kids behind. And we all have to be, for me, a team is you all have to work together to succeed um in the goals that you put forth in front of you, whether they be small or large. So for me, a team is always about compromise, it's always about teamwork. It's always about listening to everyone's opinion and working together to achieve that ultimate goal at the end of the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amador, and thank you to all of our candidates. Those are really insightful, thoughtful responses to those five questions. So um, we are at six nineteen and we've completed the five questions provided by our Board of Education. And we have received some questions from our community, I'm tracking those in real time with my team. So I'm going to go ahead and read the first question received. And we're going to go back to the order of answering from question number one, with, starting with Mrs. Strada, all by Mr. Amador, Mr. Cox, and Mr. Guero. So candidates, the question is, and I'm happy to reread if you need it. What do you think is the greatest challenge in our school district regarding gifted education? Mrs. Strada, you'll be our first candidate to respond. When you begin speaking, you'll have three minutes.
In regards to gifted education, I think that one of the biggest challenges is that there's a huge disproportionality rate on how we are um saying what kids are gifted and what kids aren't. I think there are a lot of gaps in programming, there are a lot of gaps in identifying students, specifically students of color um and emerging bilingual students. And so I think that the biggest challenge really is trying to figure out more equitable ways to identify students, um more equitable ways to run programming for gifted programs. Um, and then having the hiring and retention of bilingual culturally competent um gifted teachers. And so um, all that to say is that it's not only a problem in the district. This, this issue um is nationwide, right? When we're thinking about um the studies that show uh the percentages of students who get identified as being gifted and the exams that they use to identify students, um it all goes back to a question of equity. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mrs. Strada. And now we will move on with Mr. Amador. Same question. And once you unmute and begin talking, you'll have three minutes.
So for me, I think the lack of gifted and talented programs in our district. And I think that's where we have to work. I don't think it's, I think it's identifying the students, but I also think the lack of programs that we have towards gifted and talented in our district. We have programs here, but not all of them, you know, our programs are so focused on students who are not gifted that I think some of our gifted intelligence students get overlooked. Um, you know, and that is where I think we would need to identify them better um and be able to provide them a means to be able to excel in those areas that they are gifted in. So I think that that's our biggest thing with gifted and talented is I think we have a lack of programs and a lack of of actually seeking out students who are gifted. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Amador. Mr. Cox, you'll go next. And when you begin speaking, you'll have three minutes.
Sorry about that. Personally, I, I, I don't know a ton about uh gifted and talented stuff, but what I do know is is uh you know, things of this nature generally go around um an identification process of some kind. And anytime that we can collaborate with people, uh nonprofits or or people that specialize in this area, uh, I feel our district would benefit. And help our students grow, especially once they're identified, you know, and once they uh, once we figure out a good system that we could bring in that helps. Or uh, you know, we look at uh things that could tie into our system that could add to our system and identifying those kids that are gifted and talented and bringing them around to where uh, once we know, you know, then we can start addressing like, who is a real unique reader? Who is a real unique learner? Who's a real unique uh science kid or a math person or whatever the case may be? And, you know, what programs can we help them with? You know, from, from, again, young ages up uh to help them just grow more. And I think it all starts with being able to find those programs because you know, if you can find those programs and you can find those pieces and you can move them into these situations, you could change the lives of some of these kids, you know, especially for the gifted and talented kids uh that are already kind of maybe uh above grade level in certain things or uh, you know, maybe they're bored and that's uh something that they need is that challenge. You know, then we can kind of really get them above grade level and really start helping them advance more and more, you know, and uh just continue to help the community grow through those programs. And and how do they fit? How do they fit into the budget? Um, you know, is there grants for those things? Is there um, like I said, nonprofit resources where, you know, I've seen some nonprofits that uh, you know, they have, you know, special um, you know, special funds and different things set aside for school districts like ours that have struggled and need stuff like that. Uh, you know, that you could, you know, it's never you know, so it's a lot of, a lot of groundwork and a lot of community work with those people to try to bring them in as well. Uh, and uh, that's where I would go with it.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. And uh now we'll hear from Miss De Guero.
As a parent of multiple um gifted students, I feel that the challenge in our district is there is no challenge. Um, our district uses gifted and talented as a label and they label our students as gifted. And then nothing is um nothing is done. Um, my students have a label as gifted and they're not challenged in any way. Um, they're not put into any type of special group. In middle school, or I'm sorry, in elementary school, my oldest son uh was in gifted and talented and he had something to look forward to being in gifted and talented. He got to go to a program called SED at um the University of Northern Colorado. And since then, that program has went away. Um, once the students got into middle school, there was, they were just with other students, other students um who needed more focus. And therefore, my students um maybe had an extra project or had to write an extra paper. But as far as a challenge, there was not one. Um, and then as soon as they got into high school, absolutely nothing there. I mean, there's AP classes, but those are not specialized for gifted students. There's honors classes also not specialized for gifted students. Um, to anybody, any of the students can be in those and that's perfectly fine. But um, my student just was labeled. Um, so I definitely think that that would need to change. Um, the program leaders and executives and the communication with parents is zero. So that would be something that would need to be looked at. Also, like I said, something to look forward to, maybe recognition. Uh, there's no scholarships for students labeled gifted to, for college. That would be some, that would be an incentive for parents to maybe want to put their student as a gifted student.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Okay, thank you. But as of right now, our district just uses that as a label, and I think that's a huge default.
Thank you, Ms. De Guero, and thank you, candidates. President Lewis, I'd like to pose a question to you. We're at six twenty-nine and in the hopper, we do have one more question. I wanted to find out the board's uh thoughts on having our candidates answer one more? Or would you like me to proceed with the closing?
Colleagues, are you good with one more? Yes, 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 yes. Thank you, Brianna.
Thank you to our Board of Education. All right, so we have one final question that was submitted. So I'll read this and then let's go to our order from number two, which starts with Mr. Amador. The question is, candidates, what do you love about District fourteen and Commerce City? Mr. Amador, you'll have, let's change it to two minutes to respond for this one since we are in our closing time.
So my love for Commerce City is, I grew up here. I love it, I love everything about it. We have a great community. All my family lives here, we all grew up here, we still live here. Um, I mean, my, I have three cousins that live within walking distance of my house. So my favorite thing about Commerce City is the community. The passion, the love for, you know, the high school. I love going to the events. Um, you know, I work multiple jobs, but one of my favorite things to do is, you know, see all of the, the state wrestlers that go there every year when I was working at the Pepsi Center in the box office and seeing all of the guys at One. and seeing all of the guys at One. And seeing that posted on social media for our school, that this is something we were proud of. You know, my love for this city is I, I, you know, I moved away for a couple of years for a job in Texas, and I moved back because I wanted my kids to come here. So we got, you know, my wife got pregnant when we were away, and we moved back to Commerce City. And we've been here now. My daughter's birthday is today. She turned twelve. So we came back here, and we've been here since she's been, since she's been born. And I have a two-year-old son that will go through the district as well. My backyard is also elementary. I love it. I I love everything about our district. We can always, you know, if you need help, there's help there. Our community thrives on local businesses, you know? I I love seeing, you know, um, some of the Agueros. I see them all the time at, like, La Casa eating. So I know they're they're in the district all the time. I see Ms. Lovato. I've seen Ms. Quintana at Walmart walking around. You know, so I've seen everyone. It's just, you know, our community is is not a large community, but the people that are here love the community. And that's what I love. So, um, you know, that that's my love for this district is is the community and loving, you know, all the schools that are here because they're such good, you know?
Good times.
Each other. Sorry, thank you, Monica.
Thank you, Mr. Amador. We hope your daughter is having a wonderful birthday. And next, we'll hear from Mr. Cox. You'll have two minutes to answer the question.
You know, my favorite thing about, uh, this place has always been, uh, when I was in high school, when we were doing vocational and we were doing VICA, we had a VICA night, which was a skills challenge, where every vocational person got to do what they did, and they got to show their parents. And they got to show a bunch of people in the community. And they came and voted, and we won first, second, and third prize. And then, uh, you know, we got to weld and paint in front of everybody. And we got to, you know, build something in carpentry or, you know, whatever your class was. And then later on, we got to go out in the parking lot, and we got to see all the kids that Brian Hanson and Terry Hackbart and Mr. Castillo and all those guys trained and all their nice fancy cars and all the nice jobs that they had. And they told us all about how they went straight from high school into a lot of those jobs. And it was kind of refreshing to know that, you know, you didn't have to go to college or, you know, you didn't have to. If you weren't a good reader, you could go do something cool, still have something nice, you know, to show for it. And, uh, maybe even come back and teach at Adams City someday because that's what Paul Sisneros did when I left, was he came back and taught autobody. So it's kind of awesome to see that, and it represents everything I love about Commerce City because it's just a, you know, it's like a hard-nosed place. You know, our, we're known for wrestling, and we're known for our industry business and working on trucks and cars. And I love it. I love that part of it. And I think that's something that I want to bring back is I don't feel that anymore. You know, I, sometimes when I go to the high school, I see the cool shop, but I don't really see the kids doing what we were doing. They're not dragging stuff out and, you know, stripping it down and then taking it back in, you know? Like, it just doesn't feel the same anymore. And I'd like to bring some of that back to them so that they can have it too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. And next, we'll hear from Mr. Aguero. Same question, and you'll have two minutes.
My favorite thing about, um, being part of this community and this school district is we've always said, um, eagles are friends forever. And a lot of the friends that I've made have turned into my family. And that, to me, is super, super important. And probably what I love most about this community is my family, that's not blood. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Aguero. And finally, Ms. Estrada, you'll have two minutes to answer the same question.
I would have to say that I love the, um, the tight-knit community that Commerce City is. My neighbors, um, the locally owned businesses, the leadership coming out of Commerce City, um, the tacos, the gorditas, right? I love it all. I was working with, um, groups of teachers in Adams fourteen and seeing the passion that they have for their students, the commitment that they have to make things better. And so all of that, and then that shows just to say that Commerce City is a great place. And I'm proud, um, to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Estrada, and thank you, candidates. Those are wonderful responses. So in closing, we want to, um, show appreciation to our candidates for being brave and, um, you know, coming out and and sharing your really thoughtful candid responses tonight. So thank you so much. We're really appreciative of our esteemed Adams fourteen Board of Education and their thoughtful consideration of this amazing group of candidates. We don't envy you because this is a a hard choice, um, that you have in front of you. Thank you for our community for taking time to come out tonight and also to our staff who've come out to to listen to these exemplary candidates. The Board of Education is going to take a final vote on Tuesday, March ninth, and appoint the new Adams fourteen, um, Board of Education Director. And then before we close, uh, just a reminder that if, um, our audience has any comments that they'd like to share with our Board of Education about one of our candidates or all of the candidates, that email address is communications@adamsfourteen.org, and we'll make sure that those get forwarded directly to them. Superintendent Rangel, President Lewis, or Board of Education, anything else?
As I said prior to the meeting, thank you all for throwing your hat in the ring. It's really, really an important service to our community and our school district.
Thank you for your courage. Um, I know this is not the easiest thing to do, um, virtually or in person. So I I thank you all for stepping up and and answering the questions with, um, your best thoughts. And and I really, really appreciate you, um, putting your your hat in the ring as well. So thank you for your courage.
Anything else from our other Adams fourteen Board of Education members?
I would like to just thank everyone that, uh, put in for this position because it is a hard position and it's a hard decision for each of you to just to make to put your app in here. And, uh, I just want to thank you all. I know some of you. Uh, and I just want to thank you for all your great answers and to all the questions and look forward to seeing one of you on our board. Thank you.
Can you hear me now? Sorry, I didn't know I could say something. Otherwise, I would have said something before. So thank you all, only because I've been where you are. So trust me, in person wouldn't have been any easier. Actually, I would have preferred doing it this way, but it was my turn. Because I was like really nervous too, so don't feel bad. I and I do also appreciate that. We have so many committed, uh, members in our community who really are, uh, looking forward to to taking on this spot and knowing that we have, you know, three spots coming up in November. Just put that out there, um, that there's always opportunity for, um, more folks or, you know, um, the three remaining folks to, uh, look into that as well. So just put that out there and thank you again. And like I said, it's just, it's fabulous. You you all, um, really do represent what we love about our community, right? We we just are, uh, we are like one big familia, you know? It's like, that's just who we are. So thank you for being here, and I appreciate your answers as well and and your time. How about you tonight?
Well, now I feel like I have to say something. I'm obviously the one that's like, shut up, Renee. Thank you all so much. I know it, um, took a lot of courage to, um, step up and throw your hat into the ring. I know this isn't, uh, Maria just spoke to it. It's a, it's a hard process. Nothing like being thrown into the, um, spotlight among who knows how many people. But, um, thank you all. A little emotional now just because that last question, it was a great question. And you guys know, we, just like Maria said, we're we're all familiar. We're all, we're one community, one heart, one voice. So thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Lovato, and thank you, Board of Education, and thank you, everyone. So with that, um, everyone have a safe, restful evening, and, uh, we'll regroup on Tuesday, March ninth. Thank you.